The microphone if necessary and the moderate can it will remove individuals from the meeting if necessary. Again, thank you for your patience. We'll be starting here in a matter of minutes. Thank you. Yep, Randy, if you could pull up the agenda, sir.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome board members in public to our blended meeting this evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask everybody to rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tom, if you would, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Tom, and thank you, everybody, for the pledge. Jared, if you would, roll call, please.
Barb Barker?
Here.
Tammy Blank?
Tammy, are you online?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm here.
Binda Brode?
Present.
Julia Tamaki Kukro?
Present.
Tom Harley?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
Present.
Mrs. Leaper?
Present.
Mrs. Lowry?
Present.
Mr. Schroth?
Here.
Okay, Jared, thank you for that. Again, I would want to welcome everybody to our meeting this evening. I apologize that we ran a little over in our committee meeting and executive session. I don't have a formal board president's message this evening, but in the interest of time, I would ask the committee chairs, whenever possible, to take as many of the motions as they can as a consent item. And with that, Jared, do we have any public comment?
We have two, sir. The first one up is Dr. Sarah Rutledge.
Sarah, if you would, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Indiana Area School District, School Board, and Administrators. My name is Dr. Sarah Rutledge, and I am a 26-year educator and a professor of education. I would like to begin by expressing my appreciation for the work that you have all engaged in during this unprecedented time in American education. Your deep commitment to the students of our district is commendable. I am providing a public comment this evening to advocate for the hiring of two full-time art educators in the Indiana Area School District to replace the two teachers who retired last year. Yesterday, on Mother's Day, I was sitting in our family room surrounded by all of the beautiful art that our children have created during their K to 12 years in the Indiana Area School District. The dedicated art teachers in our district taught our children the intellectual creativity and skills essential for crafting the amazing 2D and 3D art that fills our home today. On Saturday afternoon, my husband and I were pleased to attend the senior art show opening at the Artist Hand Gallery to view our daughter's work along with the work of her peers at the high school. We additionally purchased work by her peers, and we're happy to support a local business as well. The entire show was a success because of the leadership exhibited by her art teacher, Ms. Beth Porter. Ms. Porter has been a bright light in the lives of the IHS art students for many years. In addition to teaching the students about art, she has taught them about broader lessons in life, including leadership, communication skills, and friendship. Under her guidance, the art room has been a positive place for our daughter, Ally. It's been a classroom filled with joy during a dark time. In a few weeks, Ally will be our second child to be a proud graduate of the Indiana Area School District. I'm writing this letter on behalf of all of the students that will come after them. I'm advocating for future generations of art students who will need full-time art teachers to continue the tradition of quality art programming at the high school and the junior high school. In addition to the current art curriculum, new media art should be added, including graphic design and other digital arts. Scholarly academic peer-reviewed research articles consistently demonstrate the critical importance of art education to the development of the whole child in regards to their cognitive, social, emotional, and physical development. Art education has also been shown to improve school attendance. Our daughter rarely misses a day of school. She would never want to miss a day on the Potter's wheel, that's for sure. And last year, she was awarded a certificate for perfect attendance. A fantastic new resource developed by Americans for the Arts, titled 10 Reasons to Support the Arts in 2020, discusses how the arts unify communities, improve individual well-being, improve academic performance, strengthen the economy, drive tourism and revenue to local businesses, spark creativity and create innovation, drive the creative industries, lead to higher civic engagement, improve healthcare, and how the arts provide for the health and well-being of our military. A comprehensive, well-staffed art program would equip our students to enter the world and add to the fundamental components of healthy communities in which we live. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my passionate plea to replace both of the art teachers who retired in the Indiana Area School District. While our daughter, Ally, intends to study neuroscience in college, the art program at IHS has created for her a love and understanding for the arts, which she will continue to embrace the rest of her life. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Jared, who's next?
Diana Bennett.
Diana, if you would, go ahead with your public comment, please.
Good evening. My name is Diana Bennett, and although I am a third-grade teacher, tonight I'm speaking as a mom. I currently have a ninth and 11th grader here at Indiana Area School District. Thank you for all your time and efforts in making many difficult decisions for our students. I am speaking tonight to ask that you would replace the two full-time teachers at both the junior and senior high schools that were vacated due to retirements. My daughter Maggie's year was made different, and she excelled, and she excelled because of the art programs here. I know she is not the only one. Although the necessary classes are being taught with diligence, the load on these teachers is not sustainable, let alone continuing to grow the important positive impacts in our community through the many outreaches. We must sustain the exemplary programs, not only for our children's academics, but also for their social and emotional well-being. Having one teacher at both the junior and senior high makes it extremely difficult to continue the pace that both Mrs. Weber and Mrs. Porter are keeping, in addition to including new and upcoming opportunities and meeting all of the Pennsylvania State's standards comprehensively. Although at this point, my daughter is not pursuing art as a career, she will be pursuing it as a lifelong inspiration, creative outlet, which is an essential part of her well-being. We know it unifies communities, it improves individual well-being, strengthens the economy, and connects each of us across age, race, and ethnicity. I can't think of a more important time to create healthy outlets and communities during these difficult times. We all know that when there is more to do and only one person doing that job, there's only one person doing that job, changes have to be made, and it takes its toll on those who are passionate to continue to produce exemplary programs. I am asking that you continue to invest not only in our kids, but also in our community, and fill these two positions as originally planned. Thank you for all of your efforts in growing Indiana Area School District to continue to be a place where our students develop lifelong skills, perseverance, and grit, while enjoying learning in a healthy community that values the arts. In conclusion, please consider trusting the opinions of the professionals and the administrators that you hired to do what's best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, next on the list is IAEA, ASME, SGA, or STUKA. Paul, I see you're on the call. Do you have any comments tonight?
Hello, Mr. Schroth. I do, and my comments tonight are in reference to Agenda Item 8.3, the Audit and Finance Committee. I recognize that this is a very packed agenda tonight, so I'll make my comments upfront so that the meeting can continue. I would like to thank two more education associations this evening for their generous donations being considered tonight. United Education Association, led by Mr. Justin Henning, has donated $600 to the Eisenhower Teachers for Supplies, as well as Homer Center Education Association, led by Mrs. Lisa Adams, has donated an additional $525 to Eisenhower Teachers for Classroom Supplies. The generous acts of my colleagues in education is truly amazing. It makes me proud to be part of this profession and this educational community, to see people come together in times of need to support our students. With this motion tonight, local teachers' associations will have donated $4,725 to support Eisenhower students. And I've seen other agenda items that include not formal associations, and you'll see one of them. I would like to take this time to thank them once again. I would also like to thank all of the teachers within the Indiana Area School District for reaching out to help and support their displaced colleagues, and to welcome Eisenhower's fourth and fifth grade students to the junior high and Northman Elementary. It truly warms my heart when I see an Eisenhower fifth grader bopping down the hall from junior high, and I stop and I think, I like this new place. Overwhelmingly, it's been the kids looking at me and say, I love it here. Thank you, and thank you for this community and this school district. Thank you.
Paul, just before you sign off there, I did also notice on our agenda that there's $500 from the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association. I'm not sure whether you are aware of that, that or not, or whether that was included in that $4,000 total you mentioned.
It was not, Mr. Schroth, and I mentioned that I saw that on tonight's agenda. I know there's a couple of music educators on. They might be able to speak more to that point, but it was not included in that total, so that would put educators' contribution well over $5,000 in this time of need. Thank you for the recognition on that.
Not a problem, Paul. Okay, is there anybody there from ASME, SGA, or STUKA? Okay, nothing heard. We're down to superintendent's report. Mike, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking time out of your evening to be here with us tonight. Couple things, Mr. President and Board of Directors. I'd like to update you and the community on. Number one, we conducted our most recent comprehensive planning meeting on Friday. At this meeting, we reviewed district data to gain an understanding of our strengths and weaknesses, as well as some of the root causes regarding information presented. We also pleased to announce that we're going to host a COVID-19 vaccine. Today, we shuttled down about 30 to 40 kids to get down and go down there and get their first shot for those kids who are 16, year 16 and older. We're also pleased to announce that graduation is going to take place in person at the KCAC on June 4. The board and the administration, and as well as the teachers, recognize the importance this event has for our families and our community, and we're extremely excited to see all of you attending that night. Please contact the high school, though, if you have any questions, but we look forward to that night. Additionally, we also pleased to announce that we have prom coming up here on May 28 for our senior class. The students, the class advisor, and administration, and the Health and Safety Subcommittee work relentlessly to make this event a possibility. The students work with their class advisors, sir, and administration build a health and safety plan that allows us to conduct this terrific event while keeping everyone safe. I am hopeful that this is a special night for our senior class and a step towards normal, return to normalcy. Additionally, I just want to thank all the seniors out there who attended the softball game today for senior salute. It's nice really to see them enjoy themselves, the activities that they love and they enjoy. Additionally, sir, my office has received some inquiries about summer league activities and attendance at these events, and we are pleased to announce that we will be bringing fans into our facilities to watch their children play. Currently, there's enough speed for the whole summer league games at our gyms. In fact, due to the diligent and fast and effective work of the Subcommittee, they already approved the plan for girls' summer league and is reviewing the boys' basketball plan soon. I believe I speak for the entire Subcommittee by stating that we support all these activities and opportunities for students to participate in that opportunities they love. They simply need to submit their plan for how they're going to conduct the activity safely, and if that plan is in here, it's a board-approved health and safety plan, it's going to be approved. The Subcommittee is simply charged with ensuring that the health and safety plan is being followed, and they're doing a tremendous amount of work. From an advocacy standpoint, the only thing I'd like to bring to the board's attention is House Bill 358, dual enrollment charter schools. I think this bill, even though it may sound well-intended, has some flaws that I'd like to bring to your attention. And what this really allows to do is charter schools to use our dollars to help pay for kids to go receive their associate's degree at a community college, which I understand the importance of a associate's degree in a high school program. After all, I think we should have one here in our district, but I think what the board needs to understand from a financial standpoint, changes need to be made in that current environment. I sent that into Representative Struzi, as I think the amendment should not allow charters to profit from this new provision. For example, if we have a student enrolled in PA Cyber, and we are paying that cyber institution between $13,000 to $30,000, and then they enroll the student in a dual enrollment program, what are we exactly paying the cybers for? If they're not educating the kids, and the kids are going to dual enrollment program, I think you have to question the validity and the neediness of that law. And it's at the House Senate, it's at the House level now, but again, you know, this is unfair advantage to lure kids from why we foot the bill. And please, do I think every kid deserves an opportunity to take a part and take advantage in dual enrollment programs? Absolutely, I do. But I think we have to look at where the money's coming from and follow that trail. As we sit here tonight, we heard from two people about the need to find art teachers. Imagine what unfair advantage this puts us at compared to our competitors at a cyber platform. So I know you value advocacy. I know you value public education, and I wanted to bring that flawed bill to your attention, sir.
Okay, Mike, just one real quick comment here before we move on. I would encourage as many of the board members to attend the graduation as the system will allow us to do. And for those that do attend, if we're able to make it happen, I think the right thing to do is to split up the honor of handing out the diplomas to the students. And so, Mike, I'm assuming you can report back to us prior to graduation as to how that might, how the board might be able to participate in that manner. Okay, Ron, solicitors report, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update. If you may or may not be aware, the United States Supreme Court heard oral testimony on a case called Vial Mahoney. It talks about off-campus speech for students and its nexus to the school district setting and disciplinary consequences regarding that. So certainly a case to watch. There's been no determination made, but we are actively waiting for that opinion to come out, and we'll certainly update the board and circulate that when it does come out. Mr. President, if I may, I did want to just talk while I have an opportunity about an item that shows up way down the agenda, but for exact session, just to talk about it. We did talk about safety and security issues. We did review candidates for supervisor building and grounds. We talked about a legal opinion and requirements of procurement. And then Section 6.12 that shows up in the agenda was also discussed. So I figured I would just take my opportunity now, if that's okay, Mr. President, to give that update. Thank you.
I appreciate it. That'll save questions from either Chauncey or Josh here later on.
Not a problem. Yes, sir.
Okay, Mike, it looks like we've got a quick literacy update under item number two.
Mr. President, this time I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Heinrich, the Director of Education, to present our findings.
Thank you, sir. Last week, at the Academic and Extracurricular Activity Committee meeting, we had a few presentations that really warrant a summary, a review for the public. We had a presentation on our literacy program and a presentation on our proposed BattleBots program or Combat Robotics Education Program at the junior high school. And I just wanted to take a minute to highlight for the board and the community what those presentations were all about. Two years ago, the last two years, we've been working very, very hard to create a a comprehensive literacy program that is really going to make sure that all students exit the third grade able to read and comprehend reading. Two years ago, this board put in Wilson Foundation's Phonics Program and the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Program to really build the bottom strands of Scarborough's Rope, which you see on the board now. Scarborough's Rope is the groundbreaking infographic that was put together by a teacher of reading many years ago, and has really become the industry standard for when we think about reading, you know, how all of the different skills really weave together to create comprehension and automaticity. As you see in the bottom part of that rope, word recognition, access to the code, you know, being able to understand letters and sounds and how they go together to form words is really addressed by our Foundations Program and our Hegarty Foundation, or Hegarty Program. However, we were really needed to beef up our language comprehension piece, build that background knowledge and vocabulary. Randy, if you could change the next slide. What we did was we moved to CKLA. And CKLA, or the Core Knowledge Language Arts, really addresses the background knowledge and vocabulary building that is necessary for students to take new learning and attach it to old learning. It gives them the context and the background to really organize learning in their minds. It addresses that knowledge gap. Natalie Wexler wrote a book recently called The Knowledge Gap that really addressed this idea where students weren't struggling with reading comprehension because they couldn't read the words. They had no background knowledge to attach new meaning to. So it works like Velcro. If you have that past learning, that old learning, or that previous knowledge, the new knowledge comes faster and will stick faster, and that's really what CKLA strives to do. The ladies who presented, the two teachers that presented, Ms. Angie Petroff and Ms. Megan Valles, talked about the baseball study as an example, and the baseball study was really, they gave students with varying reading abilities a passage about baseball. And baseball is a very technical sport, as you can, as you all probably know and probably can guess. The, as the students read it, what they found was that the students with the highest reading ability and the highest background knowledge obviously did the best on the reading. However, what was surprising was students with lower reading ability but high background knowledge did the second best. Because of that background knowledge and that previous knowledge, they were able to comprehend the passage much more effectively and efficiently than their counterparts, even those who were more, who were more skilled readers and accesses of the code than they were. So it just, again, illustrated the point that CKLA is really trying, strives to build that knowledge gap and build that structure for new learning to stick to. If you think of the word pitch, which would definitely be relevant to that baseball study, that word may have, you know, a dozen or more meanings, depending on the context. But if you have no prior knowledge to attach that learning to, it makes comprehension very, very tough when you see that word in isolation. The other thing that the teachers really liked about CKLA was the gradual release model and how it builds skills, and it builds the student's ability to really read on their own. It starts with very, very heavy student-centered work, whole group work, where the students are listening to the teacher read, following along, and they practice the whole group about 67% of the time. If you look at Unit 2, which is, which talks about animal classification, 67% of all the activities were whole group led by a teacher. If you move forward to Unit 9, the unit they were just doing last week, which deals with early explorations of North America, only about 20% of the activity was whole group. 40% of the activities now are individually based, which, again, is that gradual release model where we build the foundation, we get the students comfortable with the learning, they hear the words in speech, they are exposed to the vocabulary frequently and the structures of text, and then gradually throughout the course of the year, the teachers push the focus of learning onto the readers. So they shared with us a snapshot in our classrooms. The other cool thing about CKLA is that it not only does it expose students to text, but it focuses on nonfiction text. They are going to learn a lot. The CKLA lessons are founded in social studies and science, which really does a great job building that foundation for learning, not only for ELA skills, but for future learning in those areas as well. You can see there was a lesson on light and sound. If you go to the next slide, Randy, you'll see the students having Viking Day after they learned about the culture of the Vikings. They learn about the moon phases. They had an activity where they used Oreo cookies. Don't tell anybody about that. It's a violation of our nutritional policy, but they, they, they used Oreo cookies to talk about the moon phases, and this all is hands-on, student-centered work and steeped in these content areas of science and social studies, which really builds that nice background knowledge and vocabulary that students need for true comprehension. They talked about Native Americans in history lessons, civics lessons, the, it goes on and on. And Ms. Petroff was nice enough to share with us some of the testimonials from some of the students, and I wish, if you can't read it at home, these are, these are pretty awesome. The students wrote about why they love CKLA, and the student on the right writes, "You really deserve to know, so let me tell you." And goes into great lengths about why, all the cool things she learned about ancient Rome and Julius Caesar, and it's really, really been engaging for the students, and the students really seem to enjoy learning again. And what Ms. Petroff kind of put the exclamation point on the night, she said, "They love learning, and isn't that the point?" And I really wanted the community to hear that, so that, you know, they knew that we had really completed, I think, or the next section of Scarborough's Rope by finding CKLA, which is really building that background knowledge and vocabulary. Randy, if you go ahead. We also had a presentation from the junior high technology teachers, and they are proposing that we fund and start a BattleBots program at the junior high and potentially start a BattleBots League throughout Indiana County and the surrounding communities. And what BattleBots is, is a comprehensive STEAM program that is going to allow students to build and then compete, build their robots and compete against other teams to see which robot can disable the other robots first. It's like a wrestling match with robots, if you've never seen it on television. And what it does is they put students into groups of four to six, and they really work together collaboratively to solve problems, work through a design, anticipate and make predictions about how things are going to work, and then go and test them, and then come back and redo the design if they fail the first time. It really reinforces the 21st century learning skills and thinking skills that we want all of our students to graduate from high school with, and it does so in such a fun and engaging way. It has the students working through an engineering portfolio where they will plan the procedures, research their, the robot design, go through engineering drawings, really map out the materials list, and figure out how best to disable their opponent, and then go and actually compete against other teams. So it really makes learning hands-on, fun, collaborative, creative, and it touches all the bases on what we want learning to be for all kids. This is a picture of the arena that they want to build that is able to be taken down and set up with relative ease, and they attached a budget. They're asking for up to about $20,000 of startup funds, and then after that, they will have an operating cost of between $1,500 and $2,000 each year to run three or four robots. So Dr. Minnick and Mr. Edmondson said that they are confident that they can absorb that $2,000 a year to make that program possible for the students. Through Mr. Zohorchak's work and the work of Mr. Cronauer, we have some grants that will be able to help offset some of the costs for the startup costs. So for no new cost to the taxpayer, we're able to bring this very, very cool, engaging, higher-level-thinking program to our junior high students. Randy, if you go to the next slide. I also wanted to note that Mr. Dolges and Mr. Harrington's program was recently recognized by Pennsylvania as the Tech Ed Program of the Year in the state. So we're talking about two very, very skilled, passionate, dedicated educators who are going to take this opportunity, if we, if we're able to provide it, and just enhance the experience our students have here at the junior high school and throughout the district. So I just wanted to take a minute to highlight some of those presentations from last week, and I thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Rob. Mike, I'm wondering if there's some way to possibly put those presentation that Rob did on the website. You know, I think that's especially cool that, so the public can kind of look at some of the things that we're actually trying to do. And my last comment is, you know, we used to have a thing around here before COVID, the Battle of the Faculties, and so I'm wondering if the next level of Battle of the Faculties is have non-tech educators, teachers build a robot and then battle the seventh and eighth graders. I think that might make a, for an interesting Battle of the Faculties. Okay, thanks again, Rob. At this point, I'd like to have a motion to approve our agenda and the minutes.
I move that we approve the agenda for the meeting today in the minutes of April 26.
Second. Okay, the minutes and agenda have been moved and seconded. Anybody objecting to approving these two items? Nothing heard. The board, the chair assumes that they passed unanimously. Okay, Uta, it looks like you're still up with the ICTC report.
Great. The ICTC board met on April 27. We hired some administrative support staff. We talked about the ICTC budget, and at the time of our meeting, six of the sending school districts had already approved the preliminary ICTC budget as presented to them. We had four students at the ICTC were eligible for the PPG Industry Certification Test that was held on April 16, and four of them that was held on April the 16th and four of them passed. And then they did NOCTI performance testing on April the 23rd and at the time of our meeting, the results were not in. Um, and then two ICTC students were Skills USA state champions. Um, Marley Abrams from Penn's Manor, uh, placed first in medical terminology and there's a virtual competition in mid-June. Um, their national competition will be virtual and then Haley Clark from Homer Center placed third in restaurant service. Um, on May the 27th at 6:30, Penn's Manor is hosting a senior ceremony for the ICTC students, um, on their field, uh, weather permitting. So hopefully we have good weather and not what we experienced on Sunday. Um, and then currently fifty percent of the instructors are, have reported that they've received COVID-19 vaccines and the building project for the WCCC Challenger Project is up. Um, there's blockwork happening, the structure is happening and there's bi-weekly construction meetings. And that is our meeting.
Okay, Uta, thank you. Barb, what's happening at Aaron?
Uh, we had our last meeting, uh, here in April. Uh, it was the recurring hiring and resignations. Aaron is having a very difficult time finding employees. Uh, Jim Wagner put out a plea to your cousins, family, anybody you know to, to try to employees. Um, they're looking, uh, specifically, uh, right now trying to find nurses to ride in the vans with students. Um, that's one of the critical needs. And let's see, we also uh, approved an agreement between Kiskey Area District and the Aaron IU to provide physical therapy services to the eligible students there. And an agreement with Penn State University for clinical education for the academic programs for occupational therapy assistant and physical therapy assistant. Um, we are giving, um, a $250 per day diem for substitutes in, in an attempt to find substitutes. Um, and this is for working twenty, more than twenty but less than ninety workdays. And also you should have gotten a mail, a ballot to vote for the three-year, uh, terms for, uh, Michael Burdick, Jill Eckerod and Sandra Fayok. And, uh, I support them being on the Aaron Board. So if you don't mind filling out your ballot to vote for them. Um, and that's it.
Okay, Barb, quest, quick question for you. Um, if they're looking for nurses to ride in the vans with some of the students, is this something where a, somebody might be able to do this on a part-time basis? Um, um, y-y-y-you know, or is this something where they're looking for somebody on a permanent basis?
That I would assume it's part-time because you'd be riding in the van to the facility, but, um, emailing Aaron would, uh, clarify that answer.
Okay, could you get that for, information for us?
Yes. Would you like me to just send an email out to the board or?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, thanks Barb. Okay, Tom, looks like, uh, academic and extracurricular is next.
We had a meeting on April 5th. Um, Mike, I'm going to jog through this. If I, if you need to expand on something, please jump in. Okay. Um, we had a discussion about the ESSR funds, um, and, and the uses and what's remaining. Uh, we talked about the IUP Graduate Assistant Partnership Proposal, which, um, is 25,000 per person for two people, um, using the, uh, ESSR money for that. Uh, we discussed the IUP psych, uh, school interns. And I believe the, uh, the only thing that was discussion on that is that the actual number instead of 30K is 38K. Uh, for, um, that's for three, for three psych interns. Uh, we, uh, apply, we, uh, approved applying with IU 28 for the 21st Century Learning Grant. Uh, we discussed the artificial turf, um, and the recommended moving ahead with replacement, including the, uh, padding and, um, and the fencing in some way, shape or form. Uh, we discussed, uh, the summer school redesign and, and, um, and, uh, boosting for positions that are part of the, uh, part of the agenda tonight. Um, we, uh, discussed the Linkit Pilot, which is a, a data warehousing service, which, uh, we're looking at, uh, we're, uh, giving it a test drive. We talked about the gifted support coordinators, um, and the reason that we needed those. Uh, we have, um, uh, grant spending, we have a safety grant of 20,000 remaining and a STEM grant of 15,000 remaining. I believe some of that's going into the, um, into the BattleBots. Um, non-agenda items, we talked about the lead literacy teachers, we talked about the PDE, uh, um, COVID updates and what that meant at the time. And then, uh, about the time we went home that night, they changed the regulations on us. So we're, we're still playing catch-up on that. Um, we have, uh, we have a Walmart truck full of hand sanitizer that was given to us. We don't know how big the truck is though. Uh, we had summer school planning, uh, update on what's going on on that with the, uh, with the junior high, the YMCA partnership. I believe the registration is still open on that, Mike. Is that true? Okay, um, we, uh, have kindergarten registration, April, uh, we had it, so it's already done. Um, and, um, we talked about the civics and government option, um, and what, what we wanted to do with that with no conclusion. I have, uh, just three motions after all that discussion. Um, I'm going to take five-two and five-three first, which is the five-twos, the contract with Ed, Ed Leo for website platform services to be approved at a cost of $4,200 for each year as submitted. And the Presley Ridge Agreement that the board approves the agreement with Presley Ridge and the Indiana School District as submitted.
Second.
Okay, it's been, it's been, it's been moved and seconded on five-two and five-three. Questions, comments or discussion from the board members? Mike, anything you need to add?
Uh, Mr. President, regarding the websites, the annual fee that we're to pay now, what this allows us to do is lock in for three years at the same rate before rates increase as well as another district redesign. So over the next several weeks and months, I'll be working with Ed Leo to do an update to our website.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, anything else from the board members? Nothing heard. We'll vote for this in the negative. Anybody who is opposed to these motions, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes both pass unanimously. Go ahead with five-four, Tom.
Five-four, I wanted to pull out so that Mike could expand on the, um, on the discussion of this a little bit and tell us what the values are approved. Um, so the motion is based on the recommendation of the committee and the comprehensive planned values be approved as submitted. Take a second. Yes, um, this is coming from the, um, comprehensive plan, which, um, has been going on now for three or four months now.
Absolutely, sir. We had our third meeting on Friday.
Mike, would you, would you care to, um, um, discuss what the values are?
Yeah, absolutely. What we did was through the work of the administration teachers and our community friends and critical friends, we looked and developed, um, value statements, what we believe is a guiding principle to help get us to where we want to be. And we did that from the lens of several different lenses, one of the parents outlook, uh, community outlook, teacher outlook, administration as well as students. We had students on there saying, "Look, as students, we think if we want to get the district where we want to be, this, these are the principles we have to live up to and display every day." And we went through that through every group, but I think that's important, a set of vision and a common sense of urgency between all different groups in order to get where we want to be. It was a great opportunity for everyone to discuss, add input about, you know, what we feel is valuable as, uh, you know, parts of the chain, you know, right? Parts of the machine here in the district, you know, it's just a great way to really solidify that. So this, this vote is symbolic, but it leans a moat to me because, because these are the values that we're going to hold dearly and try to live up to every day to get Indiana to be one of the best places in the nation, uh, raise and grow family.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Uh, there any comments, questions, uh, further discussion on the board members? Nothing heard. We'll again vote for this in the negative. If you're opposed to it, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that it passed unanimously. Uta, looks like Policy and Personnel Committee.
Okay, we, um, had a meeting prior to, um, this meeting tonight, um, and we discussed the IU 28 Guest Teacher Program, the Foreign Exchange Program, um, that we had suspended, um, for the 2021 school year. And then we had an extensive conversation about, um, staffing and our agenda item. I mean, there are, uh, items on the agenda to reflect that as well as some of the other things that we did not get a chance to get to.
Okay, how many of these, um, you've got quite the list of motions here. How many of these, uh, do you think we can take on a, uh, consent basis?
Um, I think let's do, um, six-two, six-three, six-five, six-six, six-seven and six-eight. Pardon me?
Can we pull out six-five, please?
Sure.
Or I could just comment on it. I mean, if, if that would.
We can pull it out, it's fine. Um, so it's six-two, six-three, six-six, six-seven and six-eight.
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second on those. Um, Mike, any, any comments you need to make on, on any of these items?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. These items are reflective of some of the initiatives going on in District 66 refers to the hiring of the summer learning camp positions, whether secondary or some other elementary positions. And, um, the rest are pretty standard business operations and we're glad to get those done and get those out of the way.
Okay, any questions, comments or discussion from board members? Nothing heard. We'll vote for these again in the negative. If you're opposed to, uh, these motions, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that they pass unanimously. Go ahead with six-five, Uta.
Um, actually, we need to do six-four unless we want to skip that. And, um, Mike, is there an urgency to do six-four tonight or can we move it to the next meeting?
We can absolutely move it to next, next meeting.
Okay, then we will wait. Um, six-five, Appointment of Board Secretary and Recording Secretary. That Denise Markle be elected as Board Secretary of the Indiana Area School Board and Jared Cronauer be elected Recording Secretary for a term of four years effective July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2025, and that the salary be set at $5,250 for the first year and increases of $250 for years two, three and four be divided equally.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Barb?
Um, I just want to say that, uh, I believe I said this at a previous meeting. I, I think this should be one position, that we should have a separate secretary and, uh, treasurer position and, uh, to just give less opportunity for mistakes and, uh, more, uh, uniformity.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Barb. Um, anything else from the board members? Okay, at this point, um, um, let's take a roll call vote on this, Jared. Yeah, go ahead.
I guess, Mr. Bukovich, reclaim the two positions. What do the two positions do?
Yeah, absolutely. I guess do they both receive that $5,250 or do they split time and do?
The money, I think, is split between the two, um, because Jared shows up the meeting, it serves in the role of secretary and then Denise is the one who serves as the recording, um, secretary.
Jared, anything else? No, Ms. Markle is the one. I mean, we, we work together to put the board agendas together and make sure everything, um, she does the posting to the website. Um, and then, you know, we work together to put the minutes together that I record here at the board meeting to get that out to the board. Um, and really just, you know, make sure the board meetings are put together and posted, those type of activities.
But you split that $5,200?
Yes, sir.
That's what's not clear in the motion.
By law, I'll turn to, I'll defer to Attorney Repack. By law, you're required to appoint a set Board Secretary, as you all know, for a period of four years. So I think that's, um, want to make sure that we're clear on that.
That is correct, Mike. It's, uh, it's four years, it has to be in May and it started in 1959. So this actually is the time that you would elect.
Thank you, Attorney Repack.
This is another one of those, uh, deals, Ron, where it's something that, uh, was started, uh, way before most everybody here was maybe even born and we're still continuing with that process.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's school code, section 404 requires us to do a four-year term. So it is written in the code. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go ahead, Jared, with a roll call then, please.
Yes, sir. Barb Barker? Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Brode?
Yes.
Leah Tamarki-Cucure?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr? Mrs. Leaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Okay, Uta, I think you got several on the back.
I have a few more. Um, six-nine, Employment of Supervisor of Building and Grounds. That based on the recommendation of administration, the board approves the employment of Chaney Woodring as the supervisor of building and grounds at an annual salary of $80,000, pending receipt of updated clearances and clear act 168 forms.
Second.
Okay, the, the one question that I would have on this motion, um, Uta, is, um, uh, whether this is effective immediately or at the, um, retirement of Greg?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can clarify. I hope you have the retirement of Greg, um, when Greg retires, we'll assume that role. Um, the only thing I would offer for the board to consider is if you want to post the assistant, um, position that Greg will be vacating, you, you could do that tonight via amendment or I could take care of in June, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Would you like to post for the assistant position?
Sure, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so we've, uh, friendly amendment to include posting of, um, the assistant board at this time. Any further questions, comments or discussion?
I would like to see a, another broad posting of that position, if that's possible, please.
It absolutely is, Mr. Leaper. We'd love to do that.
So noted. Okay, uh, we'll vote for this in the negative again. Anybody who is opposed to, uh, promoting Chaney to this posi-position upon Greg's retirement, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that it passes unanimously.
All right, and then I would like to take six-ten, six-eleven, six-twelve and six-thirteen, um, as consent items next. Thank you, Terry.
Okay, um, Mike, anything you'd like, you need to, uh, add to those motions?
We had great deliberation during the Policy and Personnel Committee. I think it's, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, time for the board to vote.
Okay, um.
Just took how many motions together?
Six-ten, six-eleven, six-twelve and six-thirteen.
Uta, can you pull out six-twelve?
Sure.
Okay, um.
Even though we already had a second, I guess?
Yeah, I'm gonna say. I think you're right.
That's all right, that's all right.
But it's consent, it's consent.
All right, so we're doing six-ten?
Six-ten, eleven and thirteen. Anybody opposed to those? Please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard. The chair assumes that, uh, all three pass unanimously. Go ahead with six-twelve, Uta.
Six-twelve, that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board authorizes the administration to post advertise an interview for an art teacher and to post advertise an interview for two elementary synchronous teachers.
Second.
Moved in second and, okay, Barb, comments that you may have?
I'd like to make an amendment to say that based on the recommendation of the committee, the board authorizes the administration to post and advertise an interview for two art teachers, one to be at the junior high and one at the senior high and to post advertise an interview for two elementary synchronous teachers.
Okay, that's a formal, uh, motion to amend. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Tammy Blank seconded. Okay, is there discussion, comments or input from the board at this point on the amendment?
Um, I just have a comment based, based on the conversation during the Policy and Personnel Meeting that was quite extensive regarding art teachers. It is not clear, um, what our needs are and that our needs actually, um, are for two art teachers. Um, so, um, I'm, at this point can't support that until we know specifically what our needs are and where the needs are.
Okay, Uta, thank you. Is there further come, uh, Tom, you raised your hand.
Um, I'm going to echo Uta's stance on this. Um, they, the, uh, junior high and senior high certainly justified one position. Um, I think we're being. I think we're being ambitious to go to two. We can certainly move it if it proves to be necessary after the after we get more information. But right now, one one is all the further I'm willing to go at this point.
Okay, well, ladies, ladies, ladies first. Tamara, go ahead with with your comments.
I feel the same as Uta. I think that we don't have enough information. I think that we all value art, and we want our students to have good art, but we also need to be be responsible fiscally and make sure that we have looked at all the areas where we can have staff travel from other buildings and utilize their skills as art teachers and not as just overseeing study halls and bus duty, et cetera, et cetera. So at this point in time, I definitely cannot support two art teachers posting for two positions.
Okay, thanks, Tamara. Terry, go ahead with your comments.
What I heard at the committee meeting tonight was also what was just stated, that we do not have all the facts. And we had asked, and the administration agreed, bring more information back. So at this time, I'm not.
Okay, thanks, Terry. Tammy, you've got your hand up.
The reason I support going for two positions is right now, we're going into summer, and it's going to be the fall. And we're looking into this, and the administrative student is going to look into this and let us know if we do need to or if we need one. And I'd rather err on the side of caution and possibly get more candidates wanting to try for this this position. And I really don't like the fact that the art teachers have to go from school to school and spend their time in their cars zipping back and forth. I know how exhausting that can be, getting kids back and forth to school. So that's my reason for supporting it.
Okay, thanks, Tammy. Is there any other comments from the board members? I'm sorry, Barb, go ahead. I didn't see. Go ahead.
It's okay. Um, so my reasoning for two teachers also, you know, agreeing with Tammy that, you know, we're advertising, this isn't necessarily the hiring, and it's better to get a early start on trying to find quality educators. But part of the reason for two teachers is that having two art teachers will allow the program to build. Your your art teacher can also art is just not drawing. There's much more. There's technology to it. There could be, you know, part of like home economics to it. So there's so much that an art teacher can do rather than just our existing program. And and we might find somebody that can really take our program to the next level. You know, our current art teachers do a great job, but, you know, you don't know who's out there until you put out, you know, put out the advertisement. Um, the second thing also is art does take more setup time. So that that's more time that the art teacher needs to be in the classroom, trying to set up her classroom. Also, while elementary traveling teachers are nice, that we can utilize them when in a pinch. When elementary traveling teachers have to go to the junior high schedule, they miss staff meetings at the elementary level. And so they're not able to be part of their building, and that has can have a detrimental effect on their teaching abilities. And also, art is is good for mental health. And with all that we've been through in the last year, we're going to need as much mental health for these kids as we can have, and that's why I support two teachers.
Okay, any other comments from any of the other board members? Uh, go ahead, Uta.
So just because we're currently advertising for one art teacher doesn't mean that we might not find two if the need presents itself that we actually need to. So I that's why I would go back to the original motion.
Okay, go ahead, Terry.
Do we have any more information on the elementary synchronous teachers? Thought I recollect at the committee meeting that sure that we're going to need we're even allowed to.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Good point. Nope, no, nothing there, no. Unless Attorney Repack has something to do. But again, as we discussed at Academic Community Meeting, our thought was to post the positions. We would need to go through the process and bring anyone forward until we have verification that synchronous is allowed. And that's something that we also advocated to our our state legislators.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
We did talk about that at the at the committee meeting. And this is a safety valve in order to accommodate synchronous learning in the elementary schools next year. We feel that these positions could be highly, highly useful. If it's if the state legislature doesn't change the rules and doesn't let us do synchronous learning, then we wouldn't be actually hiring them. But this gets us this gets us in position so that we can accommodate synchronous learning at the elementary school if if we're allowed to do that.
Okay, anybody else with their hand up at this point? Um, Uta?
Walter, I just have a point of clarification if we're getting ready to vote on this.
Okay.
I want to make sure I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're voting on.
Okay, so what we're voting on very quickly is whether or not to amend the motion to make it two art teachers instead of one. If this gets passed, then we'll vote on the motion for two art teachers. If this amendment fails, then we will vote on the original motion for just one art teacher. Does that help?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, at this point in time, Jared, roll call.
Tammy Blank?
Um, no.
Cindy Broad?
No.
Julia Tamaki Kukro? Tom Harley? Mr. Kerr? Mrs. Leaper?
No.
Mrs. Lowry?
No.
Mr. Schroth?
No.
Barb Barker? Amendment fails one to seven or one day.
Okay, so just to clarify, we're only agreeing to post for one position for an art teacher in the original motion as stated. Is there any further discussion on this particular motion? Nothing heard. Jared, roll call, please.
Cindy Broad?
No.
Julia Tamaki Kukro? Tom Harley? Mr. Kerr? No. Mrs. Leaper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Barb Barker? Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
No, no, seven, two. Okay, um, I believe.
I voted yes. I I'm sorry.
Mr. Kerr and Mrs. Broad.
Okay, so Mr. Kerr and Mrs. Broad voted no. Everybody else voted yes. All right, Uta, I think that concludes your your section.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Terry, go ahead with Buildings and Grounds.
All right, thank you, Walter. First, I'll go over a committee meeting report. We did have a special Building, Grounds Transportation Meeting on May sixth. And we started out with Stefan, and I'm not sure of his last name, but he works for the Fire and Water Restoration Company that is in Eisenhower doing the fire and water restoration. And he gave us a facility update and assessment. They've been in there for the past several weeks, cleaning and evaluating the extent of damage. They have sent a preliminary report to the district from their engineers outlining some of the levels of damage and and conditions of the different, like electrical, mechanical, plumbing, you know, windows and and different things. But there's going to be a final report, I believe, issued within the next week or so, and then we'll be hearing more from the insurance company here in the hopefully in the near future. So then we also discussed an update on the senior high turf. Mr. Trout presented that he had gone back to the company to whether the feather could be placed in the eye in the middle of the field, and they highly recommended not doing that because of the the seams and knitting and everything that it would take to do that. And we we approved a final mock-up because Mr. Trout was getting worried that the company wasn't going to hold their cost estimate or their timeline of the installation. And then he also just mentioned that he had got an additional estimate on fencing, and it was a lower value than what was approved at a previous board meeting. And there were several things on the agenda that we did not really get to, and there were a couple of things that we only briefly touched on. But the the next thing that we spent a lot of time on was the Eisenhower entryway discussion, and we reviewed two options where the office would be located, the new office. And the first option was in the front yard area to the to the left of the front entrance. And then the second option was taking two classrooms to the right of the entrance. And there's a motion on the agenda tonight for this. And then we discussed, we we tried to get a flavor from the committee and the board that was present about their interest in a total renovation of Eisenhower. And we didn't get into detail. We just talked about, you know, while the building is not occupied, it may be a good time to look at renovating the building since it's never been renovated in nearly seventy years. It was built nineteen fifty four, nineteen fifty five. So we talked about the electrical, the sewage, the windows and flooring and the classroom doors and flooring and such. So again, there'll be further discussion on that at upcoming Building, Grounds meetings. We briefly discussed that there was going to be a walkthrough of Ike and East Pike on this past Friday with the administration, Bucard Horn, and a few of the board members. I don't recall whether we we did talk about also whether, again, there was any much interest from the board in replacing the classrooms. And then we got into a little bit of the numbers of how many of the classrooms, but that again will be discussed at future committee meetings. We briefly discussed the architect. Bucard Horn is out of money as far as our contract with them. So we discussed the administration meeting with them to to further our contract and discuss fees. And I think that was it.
Okay, Terry.
I can go on to motion seven point two, the Eisenhower entranceway location. A, that the architect be directed to proceed with the design of the new Eisenhower entranceway based on the schematic design that shows new construction in the courtyard in front of the building.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Uta seconded. Okay, questions, comments, or discussion from the board members?
I can lead off with some stuff.
Yeah.
Can can you just explain since, you know, we're voting on A and then potentially B, what does B look like based on on the language here? Are you talking about a a buildout? As I was trying to, just to clarify the the words in the motion.
Yeah, the the B motion would be placing the new office in the two classrooms to the right of the entrance and then bumping out that front wall in both of those classrooms to make enough room for the new office in that location. Okay, a few comments I'll make.
Any of these, we're talking about not only the office, the waiting room, guidance, and the nurses' suite, much like we did at East Pike. I just wanted to make sure that that it's it's a whole. It's a whole enchilada here.
Right, right. The administrative office, like you said, the nurses' area, the counselor, the principal, a small conference room, and two bathrooms and a mechanical room. So I guess a few things I'll start out the conversation is, you know, we had quite a bit of debate at the Building, Grounds meeting last Thursday. And we'd had several discussions over the past, I guess, several months too, about a new entranceway at at Eisenhower. So the, you know, my support of this A motion is I think it's a a less expensive option than B. I think it it only takes up, and I'm going to ballpark this by saying only a third of that front courtyard. There'll still be two thirds of that courtyard left. The mulch mound that's there with the sign is not touched. The flagpole at this point is not touched. So it's it's, you know, it doesn't. There's still a nice front yard to it. The we heard from the administration that A provides, you know, good and maybe better flow for all the students and staff and public utilizing that building. We mentioned when we walked through it on Friday, Bucard Horn, Scott from Bucard Horn, mentioned there was some concern about having small hallways in there. If we did this at this location, he had already thought about moving this a little bit to the north and to the east. There's a column already in that open area that's in there that's a structural column. So then that would become like maybe the new corner of this office. So that would provide a larger area inside. I think, too, it's it's space within the property that is not utilized and would not be utilized in the future for, you know, additional classrooms or a larger, if we ever do a multipurpose room or anything like that, where if you use the other scenario B, whatever space you have to build to replace those two classrooms takes takes away from the usable property behind the building or to the side of the building. And to me, that's a big thing because we want to, I want to try to keep as much area in the back there as possible or to the side for playgrounds, basketball court, wiffle ball field, whatever. So this location helps that. Any other comments from anybody else?
I see that Tammy has Tammy Blank has her hand up.
Yeah, um, okay, I'm sorry, but I missed the first part of the of what you were saying, Terry, because you were not, it it I don't think you were coming through on the microphone. Now, you said you're in favor of the schematic A, which had the curved entryway?
No. No, this A does not have the curved entryway.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm I was just referring to the could you put up the schematic so that everybody could see what it is we're talking about?
Yes, we could do that. Randy's looking at us.
It's like, where am I going to get that at?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I I just I I think I missed the first part of what you had said, so I was kind of I'm kind of lost. That's.
That's a good, good question. It'd be good to see the two locations.
Okay, while he's doing that, Cindy, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, I I wanted to reiterate what Terry has said and then to tell Tammy that, yes, this is the design where we build out into the courtyard and the curved. this is the design where we build out into the courtyard and the curved glass is um, no longer there. It's good because of using the space that we do have, and Terry said, you know, save room in the back of the building for, um, the playground and other things, and my consideration too is we're doing a, an outdoor classroom at Ben Franklin, and I think it's a very worthwhile endeavor and in the interest of equity across the district. I would hope that we would eventually have an outdoor classroom at each of the elementary buildings. And we therefore, because the lot at East Pike is not huge, we do need to be very careful with the space that we keep and save behind the building, um, and use, use the space that we have anywhere that's, that's, um, we need to use it efficiently. Uh, the idea, the idea of using the, um, that big pole, leaving that, that big support post, that is a big post. Um, leaving that there, I think is good, and at least on the inside then, that could give a little bit of a, a, um, a, a, a little hint, a little reflection, a little idea of the curve, which would be a little bit more pleasing, I think, than a sharp square corner in the hallway. So I'm, I'm very much for that design.
Okay, Cindy, Uta, you had your hand up next?
Excuse me, um, yeah, for, um, all the reasons that have been stated, um, I think the design, um, in item A is the one that gives us the most, um, flexibility and also does not, um, take up two classrooms that we then have to find, um, space for when we're already currently having to replace, um, classroom space because of the fire.
Okay, Uta, um, anything else from any of the other board members? Tom, go ahead.
Okay, you're, you're correct in that, um, we don't, by building in the courtyard, we end up with saving two classrooms. And, um, classrooms are hard to, hard to come by. I can't tell you how much I dislike getting rid of this lobby area. It's a really important piece in that building. It's one of the reasons that building is so pleasant. And a an effort at making a pleasant lobby, much more than the scheme A is currently showing, could, uh, could mitigate that problem a bit. I have to defend the original building. The curve is, uh, and, and that lobby is really, really important to how nice that building feels. And, uh, I'm, uh, dislike the, the logic that, uh, that, uh, of, of putting it there. I can't deny it, um, but the aesthetics of that building really pivot on that, on that glass wall. And, uh, I'm so disappointed to, uh, throw it out, so. I understand the reasoning for it. It's very difficult for me to swallow though. Thank you.
Tamara, I think you had your hand up next, and then Julia, I know wants to make a comment, so go ahead.
Um, yes, I am also in favor of the first design that uses the courtyard for the office. Um, I too feel like we are going to need to add classrooms and, um, yeah, I just can't see taking away any classrooms and then having to add them back, so, um, I vote for A.
Okay, Julia, your turn.
I like both designs. I'm not crazy about the, as crazy about the first one as I am the second, um, so I'll probably, um, vote no on this because I prefer, I really feel that we're cramping the space too much in that lobby area. And you pull all the, trying to pull all those kids through that hallway, I think we would miss the space. So I think it's an efficiency issue. That's going to cut in and make that much smaller. Now it's spacious and the traffic flow is nice, and I think that's really important at the nexus of that school. From an aesthetic, dark is beautiful, the, the glass windows are beautiful. But I can't say that I strongly dislike this first one at all, but I think it's too small. Um, and I think that's going to be a problem in the future. Those are tiny offices you're trying to crush into there, um. And we have plenty of room, it's a big lot when you stand in the back, we have plenty of room to add on to that, um, where those modulars were, so, um, I'm, I prefer option, uh, the second motion tonight. Thank you.
Barb, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I did get to say it on Thursday because I had technical issues with my, uh, computer. Hence, I'm here tonight, Tim Purcell. Uh, originally I liked, uh, you know, it disrupted what was going on in the building, it kept it kind of separated. Made sense, uh, but given the circumstances with the fire and what Stefan said at the meeting, build the classrooms, and then come back and build your office. And my opinion, and I, I don't know if the administration.
Barb, I'm sorry, can you speak up? You're really hard to hear. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I'm sorry, so I think it was Stefan at the said that you could do option B in a phased approach where you build the classrooms and then you would, after the classrooms are built, you would come back and build the office in the old classrooms. And I think that is a more viable option to get those kids back in that building quicker. Uh, given everything that's going on with COVID and building supplies and, um, I, I think if we did option A, we could be looking at a year and a half long project that's, that's going to be significantly more expensive than originally thought. So I, at this point, although I like A, originally I would have went for A, um, but since the fire, I, uh, side with B.
Okay, Cindy, before I call on you, uh, I do want to make a comment. When the, when, when the architects, um, were touring, uh, East Pike on Friday, um, one of the comments that, or one of the things I asked them was whether or not there really was a disparaging, uh, difference in the two options. Because at the meeting Thursday night, they basically said no. Now, they sent us some information out here, uh, late this afternoon, and I did not have a chance to actually go through and, and, and look at it or evaluate it. But the concern that I had was their base number for new offices. At the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting Thursday night, they gave us a figure of about $250 to $275 per square foot for classroom. They were estimating 300 to 350 for the office space. When the reality is we build a little over 3,000 square feet at East Pike, and this was actually, I believe, pre-pandemic before that was bid. And we spent a million and a half, uh, the rough math tells me that that was at, put your office square footage closer to $500 a square foot to build a similar office complex. What I'd asked the architects to do was to use those updated numbers, uh, to make that comparison. When I looked at what they sent us, they were still using the $300 figure. Because the question really is when they're talking about the total square footage of the office, is that the entire square footage of the office? Under option two, you've got the majority of it inside the envelope that exists. Under option one, you've got the majority of it outside the envelope. Intuitively, I would think that there would be a much greater difference than what they showed us this afternoon. So that's because my concern on this is I have no problem with the board picking option one or option two for aesthetic or other reasons. I just think that we need to know going into that decision exactly what the cost difference is going to be. And if our bid at $500 to square foot is more realistic than their bid at 300, that could influence what that, uh, what that total dollar figure would actually be. So those, those are my comments on it. Cindy, you had your hand up. You want to go ahead with yours, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, um, so to Barbara's, um, idea of getting the kids back into the building sooner, if we're building out into that courtyard, we're not disturbing the classrooms that we have. If they get those classrooms um, repaired from the fire over the summer, the classrooms that are classrooms now would still be classrooms, the office would still be where it currently is. We could build the office complex while school is going on, if it's possible to get it started, and, and not, not, um, cause any hardship for the students. The other thing is too, um, as far as making that lobby cramped and small, Terry, you can, um, say yes or no, if I understood this correctly. If we leave that big support post in the lobby, what it does is it would mean that the office construction itself would be moved out toward, um, it would be moved out to the east a little bit so that it moved out of the lobby, out of the lobby and would make the remaining hallway bigger. And then the other, uh, the last comment I have goes to what Walter was saying and, and what everybody is saying. Something that I'm trying to keep in my mind about this with any of these things that we're doing, this building was built in 55 and it was remodeled in the 60s sometimes or added on to. What we're doing to this building now, we're going to have with us for 25, 30, 50 years. And if we've got a, a, an architectural feature that is difficult to maintain and costly, and we've got inefficient use of space and all of that, we're, we're going to be stuck with what we decide for a long time. The other thing is, I don't, I haven't been considering that much about worrying about this being so important because of the aesthetics of the building. The purpose of doing this is to have a secure entryway. The outside of the building needs to be aesthetically pleasing, the inside of the building needs to be safe, it needs to be well lit, it needs to be a, a, a happy, safe place for kids. It does not have to be, we don't have to have a massive lobby to make the kids safe. So those are my, those are my thoughts. Now I'm done. I'll quit.
Okay, Cindy. All right, is there anybody else, any other comments? Um, or questions or discussion from the board?
Too clarifying, but go ahead.
No, I think aesthetics are important. We've had a discussion at committee tonight that went well over time about art. So I think it's, I'd never discount aesthetics, but, um, it is not an overly spacious lobby. It's basically a perfectly sized, it's in proportion to the building, and I think if you go to A, this isn't bad, but you're going to feel it, you're going to be cramped. So just to respond to you, Cindy, thank you.
All right, all right, Terry, you had a comment?
Like I said, the architect is going to, uh, move the office, that rectangle, both to the east and to the north, which will make that lobby bigger, and then also the two options, A and B are identical size, so this one is not smaller than B.
Okay, Tammy, uh, last call, go ahead with yours, and then we're going to take a vote.
Okay, really quick and simple. Um, I think aesthetic is important and, and, and everything, and I believe that option A is the best option. Um, but I just want to remind everybody that the aesthetic in the 1950s and 60s isn't the same pleasing aesthetic that we, that the majority of people might see today. I, I had an artwork, an art mural in my house when I moved in and of deer in the woodlands, and I painted over that sucker because the deer just looked at me with dead eyes all the time. There's just not, you just can't always keep things from the past because it was beautiful back then.
Point well taken, Tammy. All right, Jared, let's go ahead with the roll call on this, if you would, please.
Julia Temerkey-Cucure?
Let me think for a second. Okay, so I am voting no on B. Yes for A. I'm voting no on A, yes for B, but B hasn't been made, so my vote on A is no.
Tom Harley?
I, I also am going to vote, uh, no, um, but with an asterisk or two. Um, aesthetics are important. The feeling of this school is important. The, the, what I like about the, the lobby and the building is that it's open and it's airy. It's, uh, it's very inviting. Um, I would change my vote if, if, when they do A, that they keep these this criteria in mind. So if they just Xerox A and do what's currently on the design work, I'm going to fight it for the whole time. But when they come back and they, and they make some modifications, Terry, and it make that improvement, then I would support, I would support a name, a name motion.
But your vote is no at this point?
My vote's no at this motion, but, but it's, but it's no because I want to make a point that it has to be better than it's currently drawn.
Understood, Tom. Okay, go ahead with the roll call, Jared.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper?
Yes for A.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes for A.
Mr. Schroth?
No.
Barb Berger?
No.
Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Broad?
Yes, and I do want to say that I did not mean that aesthetics mean nothing. I meant that the first and foremost consideration for me with this is the safety and security of the entryway.
See what you started, Tom? Go ahead, Jared.
Everybody, motion passes five to four.
Okay. All right, Julia.
Before we go on, I congratulate the board on getting a direction that we can move forward with this project, so thank you very much.
Good deal, Tom. All right, Julia, Audit and Finance Committee.
Thank you. Yeah, it was a good discussion. They're both nice options, but I prefer B, but. Okay, um, we did not have, this is the Audit and Finance Report, we did not have a meeting tonight. Um, we had a detailed, uh, meeting, um, the last, for the two weeks ago, I guess, or how long ago was our last meeting, Jared? I can't remember the date. 1963, yeah.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah. So I think tonight, that we've got a lot of, um, interesting motions tonight. I think for consent items, we could do, um, eight point two, eight point four, and eight point five?
Well, not, why not eight point three?
Okay, that's fine, I just thought, well, yeah, Paul's already talked about eight point three eloquently, so eight point seven's the propane bit. Bit, so fine, if anybody has any problems with that?
I can second it.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved in second on eight point two through eight point five and eight point seven. Um, Mike, is there anything you need to comment on, on any of these?
No, sir.
Okay, uh, is there any other comments from the board on, uh, these, uh, five motions? Okay, I will make one brief comment. I also want to echo what Paul McHugh said and thank the various associations uh, for their donations to help our teachers in this time of need. At this point in time, we will vote in the negative. If you are opposed to, uh, any of these five motions, please say no or nay at this time. Nothing heard, those five motions pass. Julia, please, if you would, eight point six.
Okay, Mr. President, I move, um, the 2021, 2022 tentative, uh, tentative budget adoption. The vote on the millage rate for 2021, 22 is scheduled with the final budget adoption on June 28th, 2021 school board meeting. The millage rate for the tentative budget that has expenditures exceeding revenue by $1,706,575 is a zero percent increase. That the board adopts a tentative budget for the school year ending June 30, 2021 in the amount of $57,610,005 as presented. And that it be made available for inspection prior to the final adoption at the special meeting to be held on June 28th, 2021, and that the necessary advertisement concerning adoption of the budget be authorized.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. Barb, to bring you up to speed. Barb, we're bringing you up to speed. We're voting on the tentative budget adoption at this point, or we're getting ready for discussion. Uh, Cindy, you had a question?
In the. In the second paragraph, that the board adopts a tentative budget for the school year ending June 30th, 2021, shouldn't that be 2022?
That's just technicality.
Okay, I just, I'm having trouble with 2021 and 2022 myself, and I'm trying to pay particular attention.
Yeah, we'll make that 2022, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Julia, would you care to comment on this?
I would. Now, we went over this at some, uh, uh, in a great deal of detail, um, in our last meeting. So I think we all kind of understand, um, where the general fund is and, and how we're working through this issue. Um, so I'd like to ask Jared to give us a, a brief synopsis of, once again, of what we went over at the last meeting about the preliminary budget.
Yes, ma'am. Um, as the motion does read, the preliminary budget does have a 0% tax increase. Um, we are still, we had another positive month of collections, the month of April for earned income, which is almost a $4 million revenue for the district. So we are hoping that we will even, or I'll even be able to make an adjustment for our estimated collections for next year, which could help reduce, um, the deficit, that 1.7 where it stands right now. We have a meeting on Wednesday with the Healthcare Consortium um, to set our final rates for the 21, 22 school year. Healthcare is a four, almost $5 million budget line for the district. Um, right now, the highest rate is 3.85. We are hoping on Wednesday that that rate may even be reduced, uh, but we will know that um, when the consortium meets on Wednesday. Um, so that could have a, another, you know, a positive effect on that deficit as well. Um, other than that, I mean, right now, the, where the expenditures and revenue sit is pretty much, um, what will be, is what will be advertised, and I don't see anything else changing majorly between now and then, unless the state does, um, approve something by June 28th, when we set our revenue. Um, right now, we have a $100,000 increase in state revenue budgeted for in here, which is, has been, is lower than what we typically receive. Um, the governor did have a nice increase proposed in his original budget back in February. We are not, um, budgeting for that full amount, which was almost $300,000. Um, we only have $100,000 in here right now in basic ed, which is our largest, um, amount that we do receive from PDE or from the state. Um, we also have, as the board, has been, uh, many committees have been having discussion on the ESAR funding, which is the federal, uh, money we're receiving to help with the COVID.
Um, so that would be online, on that ESAR's, um, 55 under the revenues, but that doesn't go into the full 5.6 million. That's just what we have spent in this budget, correct?
Well, the, the, the 1.0, 1.3, almost 1.8, or, you know, 1.3 that we have budgeted there is what we're budgeting as revenue, and then it would have corresponding expenditures for the next school year. That's just a portion, yes. We are getting almost, uh, 5.7 million dollars in ESAR funding. We use some in this current school year. Um, we are planning to use some over the next couple of years because we have till, uh, 2024 to use it, so.
And then would you talk, you're still expecting us to carry over about $600,000 in surplus or more?
Yes, uh, the projection right now for the 2021 school year, which we are currently in, is showing a surplus of almost $600,000. Um, we're hoping that that, you know, number may even grow a little bit between now and then as we get our final numbers. And just like last year, the board can decide to transfer a portion or all of that um, to any, to the capital reserve if they so choose, but we can make that decision um, once we get the final numbers for 2021.
Okay, Jared, and if, uh, this budget is adopted on the 28th of, uh, 28th of June, this would be the fourth year in a row without a tax increase, is that correct?
I believe so, sir.
Josh, you paying attention to that?
This would actually, uh, be the, the 50 or 17, uh, 17, 18. One, two, three, four. The, the 21, 22 would be the fifth year without a tax increase.
Fifth consecutive year without a tax increase.
17, 18, we were set at 15, um, 15.36 mils. We had 18, 19, 19, 20, 20, 21, and then 20, 20, 21, 22 would be the fifth.
Okay, uh, that's a, that's a pleasant surprise, uh, to all of us and hopefully to the taxpayers of the district as well. Is there any other comments, questions, or discussion on adopting our tentative budget? Nothing heard. Jared, roll call one last time.
Tom Harley?
Absolutely. That's a yes.
Mr. Kerr? Mrs. Leeper?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Barb Barker?
Tammy Blank? Yes.
Cinda Brode?
Yes.
Julia Temarki Kukro? Motion passes nine to zero.
Okay, thanks, Julia, and thank you, board, uh, for that vote. Um, we're now on to the closing section. Um, there is no formal discussion item under 9.1. I do want to welcome, uh, Chaney on board. Um, um, we had, we did pass that motion earlier, and I did not, uh, uh, welcome him, uh, in his new position here in a, another month or so, so, uh, welcome aboard, Chaney. Are there any other public comments on agenda items? Okay, nothing heard. We had some enclosures. Uh, there was an executive session, uh, earlier this evening. I believe Ron Raypack, our solicitor, uh, detailed that. Our next board meeting is going to be June the 14th, 2021 for general purposes. There will not be a special meeting in May. Our next committee meetings are May 17th for Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation, and Audit and Finance on May the 24th, both at 5:30 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor? Nothing heard. We are adjourned.
A quick question for the admin.